Hey, I'd like to call to order Monday, February 3rd, 2025, our city council work session at 6:00 PM. Today, we are discussing the city manager review process. We've kind of talked about this off and on throughout the last several months, and so we kind of wanted to get together, especially with the new manager, and try to get on the same page and talk about the review process that we think would work best, so we're going to kind of discuss that. And who takes the lead?
Um, I have to start with a little small presentation, then move over to just council discussion of what you'd like to to look into and comments based off of that. That works.
Yeah, I think we've done a review process in the past, and we're kind of trying to review if that's the best thing that fits us. And so we are kind of starting the process over, and if you'd like to kind of give us your recommendations or your feelings or what you've seen out there in the industry.
All right, absolutely. Yeah, one thing you'll find, a couple of things you'll find about me is I don't always do what's always been done. I like to kind of break the standards a little bit and kind of challenge the norms. And you'll find that I really am passionate about leadership and management, different things or theories behind there. We had a great meeting when I was at the CIS conferences last week that had an organizational psychologist talking about feedback too. And talked about a lot of the same things that I have in here, just about how, you know, really for retention or for attraction and good workforce development, having motivated team members in general, just kind of the way to work with those and focus on strengths as opposed to trying to focus maybe on areas that aren't as strong, or you know, the difference between going between just mediocrity compared to excellence. And so it was really fun to actually have that because we're going through this right now and to have someone else talk about it was just, it's those things that excite me. But as you had mentioned, the council has a process they've been before. I haven't gone through it in depth. I don't really know. I wasn't part of those conversations. So this is just going off of, as you'd mentioned, the best practice that I've seen, different experiences that I've had, and recommendations based off of that. I provided the council three different articles, two from the Harvard Business Review. As a reminder, one of those is copyrighted, so I had to purchase individual copies for each of you. Don't share those. They're pretty strict. I don't know how they follow up on it or not, but regardless, ethically, just don't pass that on. It's for your eyes only. That was the feedback fallacy. Anybody interested in that can go to HBR and get that and download it themselves. But the future of performance reviews, the feedbacks fallacy, and then an article done by actually a local person here in Oregon was a PSU professor talking about city manager reviews and how that applies directly. Other aspects of that are my own personal experience, as well as Gallup StrengthsFinder. They talk a lot about strengths-based management as well and have a very similar outlook on how to perform for just regular workforce. And then you add in the caveat of obviously this is a unique with the city council manager, different than a typical employer view, because there are some boundaries or barriers that, you know, you're not there as much as a typical manager would be, and that kind of complicates maybe how you would view how we can do things. So just a quick overview of those articles, some highlights I had in there, the performance management revolution being the first one. Let's go over a few areas that I highlighted. First, talking about, and this is on page, they labeled it as seven, but back then, the idea of abandoning traditional appraisal process and that, all that flowed followed from it seemed heretical. But now, by some estimates, more than one third of companies are doing just that. So our typical traditional review processes, I've been through that, like ever questioning that, it's like, well, how do you, why do you question the norm here? Do you not care about feedback? What are, what are you doing? And that's not the point here. I actually really love the feedback that I've gotten from the council and worked with you already on several things, and it's really helped me look at things differently. It's not about feedback, it's about how we do that and how we really move towards excellence as opposed to the bare minimum. It talks about heavy emphasis on financial rewards and punishments, their end year cycle. HR typically gets in that, well, we have to have these because we need a way to fire them. We have documentation. That's kind of the HR standard for why we do performance reviews and other coaching. Huh? The bad HR people. There are good HR people that are really development-focused as well and understand there's a different way of doing that. Like I say, a lot of companies are moving towards this, and you look at Google and Adobe, and they've really led the way in changing this thought process as well, so it's not all HR. But that's a typical response that I hear from HR folks. And one example I gave where there's a heavy emphasis on financial rewards, when I worked at Wells Fargo Bank, I was in that time period where they had a really strong, like I say, they measured everything. And one thing that I noticed while I was there is what the, I could foresee what was going to happen, what eventually did happen on the national news where they had this whole, I called it a, I don't know, a fiasco about open, you know, ghost accounts that people opened. Nothing that I directly experienced, but I could see how it was going to get there. And it actually caused me a lot of concern when I was a manager there, because they have such a great metric. They measure everything for you, and they would always raise that, you know, they had their standard, then you had silver, bronze, silver, gold. And once you hit gold, that became a new base, and you had to do even more the next year. And one of those metrics was about checking accounts. Eventually, you hit a cap as a high performer, you're a gold performer one year, a gold performer again, and all of a sudden, you're the worst performer and they want to get rid of you. Makes no sense whatsoever on how they had that. And so what I saw was interesting, where I worked with other managers, where they were just so focused on those to where they were encouraging or slightly encouraging their employees to hit these goals so they could get their bonuses. And well, to do that, they had to start doing things that did that, that metric didn't make sense anymore. But hey, that was the best practice. That's what the standard was from Wells Fargo. Anyway, so I had actually seen where the performance review model ended up costing a company that was normally acclaimed as a really high development company. I mean, Wells Fargo has a ton of training. They put a lot of money into training and development of their employees, a ton of leadership, do all the research, but that one area became a Achilles' heel to them because they were just so focused on that, they kind of lost control of the ship in that area. I'm sure there's other things that they, you know, could claim, but that's just the experience I saw and what even in the news, it kind of came out and showed, where that too much focus, as it mentions here, can actually be very damaging in the end if it's not a sustainable or a metric that's really focused on the individual person, you know, they excel in their own way. Seventy percent multinational companies are moving away from traditional reviews. Goes through a great timeline, and I thought it was very informative to go through that. I'm going to skip to like page 17 now. Talks about the three business reasons, highlighting those, return of people development, the need for agility, and the centrality of teamwork, really just focusing on the fact that the workplace is different today. We don't have your typical workflow of working on a line where you can clearly define, this is how you put this together, and you can rate people on that, where there's a lot more ambiguous about what things mean, what, and it talks about here, what is leadership or, and I'll give a couple of different examples in here, but just in general, these general alleys where it's different from person to person of how they interpret what that is, and that's harder to actually give a good rating on because it's very central to your own perception. The need for agility, actually I had a great experience looking, there was a, Intel had an article from, I think guy's name was Rajah, Rajah, I don't know his name, talking about how there was an issue with their, the way they're treating or looking at performance management and different things, mentioning how there's these snakes, I think you call them, snakes of spreadsheet and PowerPoint people. And just talking about you, when you get so big, you get so bureaucratic that sometimes you get so stuck in these processes that you lose the ability to innovate. And you have, he called it organizational entropy, where you just are not as effective as you used to be because you kind of lose control of that ship. And then, Chance has, I was talking to a prior contractor in Intel this last weekend. He was talking about the very same thing, echoing those sentiments of, yeah, they just lost their ability to innovate by some of these structures they had, and it's really, you know, I'm not going to dig into the what's hows. I don't know Intel in depth. I'm just, these are things that have been discussed about there, and there's at least points of notice. GE gives an example in here, changing their business strategy because once again, they want to be more agile. They found that having a year cycle, most organizations don't work in a year cycle anymore, and trying to get away from that and more get back to the regular touchpoints, regular coaching, regular discussions so you can change on the fly and not just wait for that one time to discuss whatever. And then the effect of teamwork, how there's multiple people working affecting the performance. So it's not as much about the individual, but are we obtaining the goals? But those are some of the highlights I had in there. There's a lot of good information, just really reinforcing the fact that the workforce has changed. And being able to perform and motivate people the right way has changed, and it's important to take a different look at that and how we can best move forward to accomplish the outcomes that we want as opposed to just doing something because it's always been done that way. The feedback fallacy, I won't go in a lot of detail on that one, it's just really talking about the theory and the ecology behind giving organization or giving feedback, really focusing on, once again, strength. Talks about, once again, are we the source of truth? Or is it really ambiguous what that means? How we learn, so there's, like I said, I'd encourage you to keep bringing that. But the biggest thing that I take away from that, from this article, is it says two things. Focusing people on the shortcomings doesn't enable learning, it impairs it. And then it talks a lot about the excellence side of how excellence is idiosyncratic. It really is more of a measurement of how people excel in their own way as opposed to that defined way we make them. Not to say we shouldn't give feedback and we shouldn't help. It's just talking about that, that search for excellence of how, and it gave the example of the NBA, how when you look at a free throw shooter, best free throw shooters in the world, if you get it from anybody, they all do it differently. There is no one right way to throw the free, a free throw. And he talked about one, Rick Barry even did it under, he didn't even do it overhand, he did it underhand, I guess granny shots. I think you would probably have some appreciation, that's probably not how you teach people. That's not how you'd say would be the best way, but yet that was one of the best at the time. And being able to whole face someone's strength to get those outcomes we need is different than just a one size fits all. And so it talks about looking for outcomes, not losing sight of our high priorities, et cetera. Last one, like I say, it comes from Scott Lazinby, was a city manager in Oregon, as well as a PSU professor. Did some research, including extreme government makeover, he mentions that from Ken Miller, and just how it is different in a city manager role, because really, and it doesn't mention this, but just how visual this role is and how it's already so much under a microscope from the council, from the community, from everyone. You kind of know a lot of what's already going on. Most people do. There were some discussions about some issues in the county, how we don't want something, how do we know? Most people knew that stuff was happening. It's about going through the process, and sometimes it just takes longer for that process to unravel, but it usually isn't so hidden. But I love the example it gives right there, being, raise your hand if, if you're the person you are today because of your annual performance review. He says most time it gets no hands. One person eventually raised their hand. He says, oh, really? What happened? He's like, yes, of course, I'm cynical and jaded. Just mentioning, and it's just, to me, it was comical because I've had that same exact example, and I've talked to staff everywhere I go. Say, tell me about our performance review. What do you feel about that? Is it effective? Does it help you get where you want to go? Does it motivate you? And a lot of times, staff will be standoffish, like, well, what do I say? I don't want to say something bad to my manager. I want to look like I'm, of course, I want to be motivated. I want to be critiqued. I'm a good employee. But when I can break, usually unpeel that layer from them, the response I always get is like, I dread them. It don't do anything for me. And then I talk to the managers, like, I don't like doing them. I don't think it's super helpful. And that's kind of the candid response I get from, I'm not just saying here, these are all the places I ever worked. And it reflects a lot of what I've experienced in different things, different places, both in the private and the public sector that I've worked at, and the whole point is just to really tear that side of, okay, well, if that's not working, if it's not really helpful, why are we doing it? And is there a better way that we can accomplish something similar at all? I mean, it doesn't, number one, need to happen, and two, if so, what is the way to go about that? And that's what I'm hoping the discussion really leans towards today is, okay, we're looking at the unique role of a city manager. Scott talks about in his article that the council already decides who the city manager is. That's where you really get in somebody's abilities. They already have those abilities. You look for those, you really critique that. It's a very, a very public process once again, and those personality skills and abilities don't usually change a whole lot. But our outcomes and working together as a team is really that focus of how we can work together. And he mentioned something I mentioned to you guys earlier when we first started. Usually, the way I like to do this, and what I did in my last city was, it was a two-way conversation where it was also the council. What are we, what is the, how's the council working too? And we get in those discussions and say, okay, here are the things that are going well. Here's some areas of opportunity that I think we can do better in the future. Same thing for the council, and it was a two-way, how can we work together to accomplish the goals that the city council has already set in addition to the operations of the city? So we already set the goals in the retreat. I have my goals really well set out. We've had a great conversation the last month about those, and then the more specific ones that the council already came up with as well. I go with those. He talks about that same thing in here. Compensation question, he says, well, how do you do that? Well, if you, we already have something very similar where if you have a range that usually takes care of it anyways, you have that process, you have, and then you do market rate analysis every couple of years, two to three years, to really see if that's still a fair range or a place for that person, and that, so it doesn't need to be tied necessarily directly to that. In a nutshell, focuses on practical things like both parties can do to make the council staff teamwork better. With the council, like more reporting on projects or programs, as a council, getting buried in details. For its part, is the council providing clear direction and deciding on key policy issues rather than ignoring them? Is the council focusing on the policy and staying out of the administration? Things should not be allowed to fester. They should be talked about more often, and I completely agree with that. So his, his recommendation, very similar to what mine was, is, you know, we already have constant updates with our goals. We're already talking in live session about how we're doing on things, going things. I do think that it would be good to have a two-way discussions, not just remove these completely, but to have those moments where we go and review certain things that are going well or things that we can work on. So the recommendation would be like quarterly to have those touchpoints. But other than that, it doesn't need to be so so time-consuming for the council or for me to have to do a bunch of research for stuff we already know because we're already working through it all the time. And if we haven't do a lot of research for it, then there's probably an issue with our method because it's probably outside of the wheelhouse, what we should be doing in the first place, that we're not working on it regularly. So does it provide a good feedback metric as well? One more point I do want to mention, just because 360 reviews have been mentioned, as, you know, is that part of this process or would it be part of a different way? Actually, I do think that 360 reviews can provide a great development tool for a city manager or for any employee as well. My recommendation is to have that separate, and the reason being, and I could get data for that and articles for that as well, but specifically to city management, it does provide a difficulty when it's tied to performance because there is the legal side that I worry about. Number one, our code mentions, you know, not hindering my ability to administer the staff. And when, when we get in a place where we're trying to motivate staff, either good or bad, doesn't matter which side, there's an issue where it can be difficult for me to manage my staff for good or bad. I mean, they may inflate those numbers because they want to look good to me. They may have an issue where they're in a performance review, and then I have to, I'm forced to defend why there's something there, and it might open up an HR issue that the council wouldn't normally have exposure to, which could put us in some legal issue as well. And the other side of it that I worry about is if there was an employee in a performance review improvement plan that somehow made sure that they were noticed, that they did give that review, they could then default back that, oh, you're retaliating on me if you go forward with this, and they'll play that harp all day long. So it does cause complications when it's tied to this direction. Like I say, my recommendation would be just like the ICMA mentioned, so let's do that every five years. Let's have it as part of my development protocol, but separate from this type of process. The other thing in general is, when we have these discussions, it's really forward-thinking. It's about our goals, it's about how we can work together. Performance improvement should be a separate discussion. If there's something that's a major roadblock, you know, to talk to me directly, and if there's something that's not being resolved, if it needs to be escalated to the council, great, then we go that route. But it's a separate discussion from these discussions. And those usually fall around the areas in a contract where it's pretty obvious of what is causing an issue compared to, I don't like the color, sure you were, not, not, I think you guys were that catty, but that is that type of thing. Some things I have really appreciated as good examples of what the council's already done. Kim, as an example, when we were looking at the city day of the Capitol, a quick feedback of, hey, are we going to have a one-pager? Something I wasn't even thinking about, and that quick amount of feedback helped me in a way that we provided a better front when we went to the city day of the Capitol. Marissa and a couple others, when we had our, our council retreat, the feedback of how that went right on the spot, very helpful of how I can look at that differently or continue to go forward. I mean, those things on the spot coaching are much more helpful to me to continue to do those things compared to prolonged, weight out, drawn out, things that we may forget, and then it's a isolated, I don't know, I did instance that typical performance reviews do. So, any questions about that?
Thank you very much. I was specifically enjoyed Dr. Lazinby's saying, because it's similar to my thoughts, I think, as I was reading it, and it hit home. One question I do have is, doesn't matter if it is or not, but how do you do yours throughout the city? Are they kind of in the same line, your reviews and your arm of heads?
Right, so I'm going to be working on that. I've already talked to our staff in general and received very similar feedback that our process that we do. One thing that I will say, our staff is doing them, which is great. I've been in a lot of other places, organization in public or private where it's just not getting done. There was totally need to do them, but once again, it's so dreaded, they just don't do them, which can be for good or worse. The staff here is doing them. They have a really good process. They follow up with that, which is phenomenal. And I do appreciate that they do take priority to helping have those conversations with their staff. Their, the initial response I gave from them is they would appreciate a different way of doing it because they're not finding them to be really super helpful in the process. And is there a different way we can have those conversations with staff to help really have that more coaching, good documentation, obviously, but follow-up to actually help people move forward as opposed to just a once a year, let's just, and they have the numbering system about certain types of things that goes through and have the notes at the end. But when I get them, I read them, it's like, did this help the employee? Did this help you as a manager? Did it really get anywhere or was it just documentation? And that's usually what it comes down to, is use this documentation. So, yes, to answer your question, sure, is, I'm looking at changing that process in our staff. It is a little bit interesting in the police side, and there's usually a little bit more typical. You know, we might have to hybrid a little bit depending on the type of department or the type of role. But something similar to where we want to really work on folks on development and making the best of our employees compared to the other traditional. Now, once again, when you get to like frontline employees, sometimes you have those things in there because you're still training them of, this is how you do the cash register. There are steps. This is how you do this and that, and there, when you get down to a specific type of things, those checklists are very helpful for coaching. When you get to the larger development side, it's not as helpful. So we want to change how that, those discussions happen and happen more frequently.
I want to hear from everybody here and your kind of thoughts, but one thing I'm leaning towards and want to see, and maybe we can, we can, but, you know, we talked about the job description and your responsibilities, and that, I think, is what you're in, looked at or reviewed upon. And Tyler has a really good spreadsheet that kind of takes those, I would say, 15 items that, yeah, 15 that we wanted in a city manager. And it's, if we all would go through it, and it basically just says meets or exceeds, it's an open dialogue, probably an executive session, and we kind of just go over that, like you said, if there's issues, we want to have quarterly check-ins or kind of do this throughout. But then I want to figure out how you tie in, if there is a compensation factor or completely separate. Like, this is kind of your first six months. These are the things we wanted out of you. And, and, you know, does he attend all council meetings, manages and coordinates projects to accomplish goals and objectives of the city council, keeps the city council at all times advised to the financial condition, you know, yes, you're doing it. And then at the end, if, I guess, if there is a compensation factor, we look at, let's look at range. Let's look at market analysis, and then review that kind of separately based on review we went through, but does that make sense versus giving a one, two, three, and going through a bunch of stuff? Looks like she has something she's ready to offer.
Yeah, no, I think the information you present is really relevant, and I think it is reflective of kind of where organizations are headed. I think we've got two things to consider here, the interim review or the six-month review. But then also, we've had so many conversations around this, we probably should decide what happens on an annual basis or if it's going to be quarterly, like we should figure out what this process is going to also look like long-term. That would be my preference.
To clarify, would that be a year from his start date or a year from the last time he was reviewed?
I read it as a year from today.
Six months and six months, so he'll be reviewed six months.
I read as a year from today. It says six months and then every year after that. But that's up to us. I mean, you can do another one in six months, but.
You say you read it, just for clarification, that's what we just, you're talking about what we decided previously.
It's kind of what I interpreted it as saying.
Okay.
But I could be wrong. I mean, when I read it, it says at six months, we'll do a review, and then every year after.
You're there, yeah.
Instead of on the anniversary date of his hire, it doesn't say that, it just says every year after that.
Right, that's how I interpreted what the contract stated as well.
I mean, we can do whatever we want, but I think another one in six months may be too early. But I do like to tweak it and say, we're going to have quarterly check-ins. We're going to go through this kind of quarterly updates because it's about goals. Are we getting there? And, and.
Right, and GE, so I mean, I don't want to, so I tried a little bit of a Stanfield, and where it got complicated was where we tried to do the same thing every six or every quarter. There wasn't a lot to talk about, or it became too big of a process, and it wasn't worth, the return investment wasn't quite there. And that always struggled for me because we kept going back to having additional goals beyond the goals that we already had. And I was like, I'm already swamped with the goals that we already worked on and decided together that we're going to work on. You know, where are we going to do some extras? And that's fine for maybe developmental goals of how I want to improve and go over those with the council. But at the same time, my contract also has developmental goals in there where I'm expect to go to legal Oregon cities. I'm expect to go, I mean, you already have it as expectations to go to these things, which is great because I love going to them. Yeah, so with the first review, the six month, it probably makes sense to go through. You want to make sure you got what you hired, or you want to give feedback on that. But eventually, when you're looking going forward, that becomes maybe less useful, in my opinion, because it's just, well, yeah, he's already, we already showed that he does the stuff. Now we're going to review it every year, that he's still, still doing it? Like, those are expectations that are set. It's part of the job. If there was an issue, we should be having that conversation separate from here, saying, why are we not doing these main things that are part of your job? As opposed to every time coming back and saying, okay, let's just review what we already know that you're doing because you haven't had an issue in a year, so we know you're doing it. Compared to having just maybe a couple of, we could talk, I have that in the my staff report where you could talk about the leadership qualities, and we could just have those as topics where they, anything we have could just be to inspire conversation. We don't have to hit all those every time. It can be talking about specific projects that we have. GE or Intel, I don't remember which one, they gave the example in here, just talk about their, their review is simple. It is, what's going well, what would you change going forward? And that was it. Those are the two questions they had, and that was the conversation they had every quarter or month, or however often they did it. It was just really focused on those strengths of what's well and how we can work together to improve. Quick conversation, go forward. And what's great about that is you're looking at our goals, and it's a reset of, we can have that discussion of, this is what's going well. Here's some areas that are not, either the council's getting in the way, or I'm getting in the way, or staff's getting in the way, or maybe it wasn't a good goal in the first place, let's re, and it's not that you're now in trouble because you didn't hit a goal. These are all about how are we going to excel beyond our normal job description? So it's more how do we solve this, or what do we, how to reset or redirect in an appropriate manner? And that's all focused on how do we actually go beyond just my job description? How do we get to that next level and really focus for excellence of me as your city manager compared to mishing what I already have my qualities and have shown that we have, in essence, if that's where we start off with?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm an advocate for keeping things simple as possible, still fulfilling your obligations and duties. But I really think Scott Lazinby offers some sage advice for us and other communities, you know. There's, it's, it's almost counterproductive with some of this stuff, jumping through the hoops for what reason? And so I, I really, I really like his article. And I suggest we amend Ben's appointment agreement to reflect whatever we end up with and really simplify this to the extent as possible, and look at the, look at what we're trying to do. We're, we're trying to cultivate a good leader or excellent leader for SCAPUs and the community at large and so that everybody benefits. And then that kind of a continuous, continuous improvement regime, routine, where we can, the quarterly approach is nice. It's not, not formal, it doesn't have to be formal, just kind of report. Here, here's where I think I can, I need some work yet, or where I felt I fell, I fell short. Just kind of take that approach. And I'm curious what Marissa thinks about all this.
So I'm of the same mindset of simple and keep it relevant and keep it, give feedback in the moment. That's the direction that organizations, at least from 100 companies I work for, give feedback in the moment so that you can learn what went well, did really great at facilitating that session, so much of it. I feel like really a part of session, and I got to learn a little bit more about the interactions of. you know, I really didn't like how showed up meeting, you kind of came off a little standoffish. I, I don't think it resonated really well with constituents. What do you think? So it's, I'm all about in the moment. I like a quarterly conversation. I, I like the rigor to that because it enables us to do, I would like to see it do two things. I do agree, you know, we should be forward thinking. I also think it's very beneficial though to just look back for the last quarter. What went well? And what needs improvement or what do you need from us to do? To help you do your job more efficiently? What do we need to be doing more of to help enable you to do your job better? So, um, that, that's my perspective on this. I, I think it's a, it's a dialogue. We focus on what's going well. Where do we need improvement? We do a reflection. But well, what does he need from us? Do we need to get out of the way or help? Again, it's a dialogue and it's, I think it's fairly, and of course being that I am an HR background. I would like to have some level of documentation, just that we had this conversation on this date and these were the things that we captured, that we talked about. And then, you know, we move forward. So, and then if we really want to do like an annual, it's essentially you're looking at the last three quarters. Do a, a review of quarter four, then it includes the whole year holistically, like, yeah, things are, you're, you're doing really well. You've been able to hit one, two, three, four projects, really seeing you step up in these areas. So again, conversation, it's like, just do a whole wrap up.
Council President Miller. So I think that we have two things that we need to look at here and kind of look at them a little bit separately. Even though, um, they are related. So one is, I would like council to consider that we do have a standard practice and agreement that if we do have an issue or feedback, that we do that immediately, just like what we've been hearing up here. Speaking from experience on council, when you have this many people that have different opinions about things. The issue becomes if you don't have a criteria on what we're evaluating, you get so many comments all over the place. So I do agree that, um, we do need to make it simplified, but we also have to have a standard on what we're evaluating. Otherwise, you're going to get so much feedback all over the place that it's going to be inconsistent. And what we experienced last time is it creates a lot of confusion and a lot of mixed messages. Because we speak as one, even though we're collectively, we have to speak as one message to you, so you, so it's understandable.
Right.
Um, the only, well, not the only, but the way that, um, and Joel, you can probably offer some observations too, from being on council, so long with just, you know, the, the different kind of confusion's not the right word, but different messaging that we've different conversations that we've had on the diocese about the city manager's performance. And I look back at how much time we put into establishing the job duties and the core functions um, of the city manager too. And Marissa had a lot of input on, we all had a lot of input on that. And it just seems to me that, um, of those fifteen different essential job functions that this council agreed on and spent a lot of time on, that it's just as simple. Do you, are you meeting expectations or is there room for improvement? That's it. The scores, um, a different number score is, in my opinion, kind of ridiculous because it, it's so arbitrary. And it's, it doesn't provide any sort of, I don't know, it just, you're going to get different, what we've experienced in the past when we did this was, um, there was a lot of, there was sometimes people that have the same scores, but oftentimes not. And it just, it created so much confusion. It wasn't productive at all. But the fact of the matter is, when you get into an HR situation is either you meet the expectations or you don't. There's room for improvement. Um, but then again, that goes back to I hope that this council can agree that if we ever have a concern that we're addressing that immediately. Otherwise, it's just, it's lost time.
Right, I mean, that, once again, those job descriptions, essential functions, those are what we're held to.
Yeah.
And that's kind of that bare bones, if we're going, running afoul of that, we need to have that conversation separate from on the spot, like let's, let's take care of it right away. I don't want to go for three months not knowing that I did something that you may be observed and it just amplifies. Cause I, my goal, as he had mentioned in there, I really, I do, I strive to bring the best I can for you guys every single day. And if there is anything accidental on there, I'd rather get it corrected as opposed to not know about it. But once again, having those processes separate, there's still a process for that. And that's where those key, uh, functions and duties will hold that play because that becomes that disciplinary measure of you're not even hitting the bare minimum here. We need to talk about this. But if we are, let's talk about how we, like, what can we do to be exceptional? How do we get above mediocrity and actually be something different? Be that, as we talked about in the council's retreat, how do we get that model city? That example in every position, everything that we do to really exemplify who we are. And, and it is different, each, every, every one of you is a great example. Not a single one of you is the same person on the council. You each have your own strengths and you exemplify those strengths differently. If I were to come back and say, well, here's one way to be a counselor, it would really inhibit your ability to be an effective counselor because you each have your individual strengths that can, but, but if there's a bare minimum issue that we're dealing with, we should have that conversation of, hey, you know, you're really violating our code and you're putting us in some legal issues. Let's talk about that. Or, hey, thank you so much for that feedback. It really helps me. This really helps me be a better manager. It helps me, you know, whatever, gave me some good advice for the, the city day of the capital. Just that on the spot coaching both ways, it really provides a more effective way to actually reach exceptionalism, I would say, or to.
I have a follow-up question to what you just said. So in, in looking at the essential job functions that we have here. Do you think that this prescribes a way for you to do your job? Or do you think that it still gives you the flexibility to be able to do these things the way that city manager Bridenger wants to do them?
Um, I got a job description right here. Typically, I don't see in these job descriptions, they're broad enough and I could go through, it's a good question. But I'm not going to have that on the spot, but in general, I think it just lists out, you know, my attending these meetings. I mean, we have that listed out in my contract. If I'm going to miss a meeting, I need to let you guys know. So as long as I'm following that process, if I miss a meeting, I'm not underperforming. It's just I follow in the process that was given there. So as long as these are all just minimum, like this is what we expect city manager to do, I, I don't really see.
I'll give you an example. I'll read one just so everybody can hear it. It says maintains and enhances organizational relationships both internally and externally. Collaborates effectively with other agencies regarding intergovernmental issues and solutions. And it's generally pretty, I mean, I haven't read every single one of them, but the ones that I have read here, um, because I don't remember all of them that we came up with, seem to be pretty, pretty broad.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, how I collaborate, how I work, yeah, how I work with our council or our, um, organizational relationship, relationship seem different of how I do it compared to how you would do it. Then am I doing it? Am I reaching out and fostering a good relationship?
Where I'm, where I'm going with this is I'm still trying to get back to making sure that we're all evaluating on the same things that are fair to you. Job description that you applied for. And I just, I, I want to make sure that we do have in fairness, um, very clear criteria of what you're being evaluated on. Because we, if we already agree that we're going to, um, have a conversation about anything that meet, that doesn't meet expectations, then you know, that, that's a big hur, that's a big hurdle that we just overcome, right? But if then when we just do any sort of evaluation, if we want to continue to evaluation, so we really have to, if there's a financial component to it. Then what are we all looking at? Because otherwise you're going to get, you're going to have so many different opinions about what it is we're grading on.
Let me put a context to this. So, so in the, in the five or six years that I spent with manager Sykes on these annual evaluations. It, it was very simple and straightforward and we relied on, on Mike to, uh, give us a self-evaluation through all the criteria that relate to his job. Then we, if we had a comment on any of those, you know, where we needed, he needed improvement and so forth. It was very straightforward and simple. Um, and it relates to the, to the job description, it relates to your employment agreement. Um, and so it, it filled all of legal squares, so you don't get into legal, legal jeopardy. But it wa, it was just a very simple, you know, didn't, it wasn't time consuming. And, uh, you know, it, and so that kind of approach to, to me, and, and it ties together with Lazenby's uh, uh, assertions.
Was it during the executive session, the discussion?
No.
That was like my question too, is the actual process and how much is public record? How much is executive session? Written document?
It was all open, all open.
I've heard keep it simple and dialogue, which I agree with, hearing that kind of throughout. I do like, if, again, if there is something in the job description, you say it's a contradiction. It says make all meetings. Then it says if you can't make a meeting, you let us know. Why can't, if it says make all meeting? I mean, just if there's contradictions that, that don't align, then we can adjust it. But I kind of like Tyler has here, it's the fifteen job descriptions. But also what my point was keeping it simple, but then if we're going to have quarterly, that's actually adding it, adding more meetings. But those quarterly meetings won't be in depth. It won't be like, there's not going to be every single item we're going to be going in depth. It might be kind of going over the ones that are highlight for the last three months. Because again, we don't want you to have to spend a ton of time, staff time, a lot of time on this. We're going to do it quarterly. But it's, um, but I don't, I also like it better if we do just have check-ins quarterly where we go over these job descriptions. That way, if there is a problem, you're addressing it quicker and sooner and you're getting it taken care of.
Yeah, I do. Um, I just want to say what my opinion is. So I agree with what's been said up here and, and of course, keep it simple. I see it as two different things. Some of the things that, uh, that Ben we have a check off of, yes, this is what we were looking for. Is, did he, is the meeting, everything that we asked for, for a city manager? I also agree on the quarterly check-ins because I, I wrote this. It's more, I think I would like to see more of of an update. It doesn't have, more of updates on how you're executing, using your team, your staff in order to execute our goals. And so, um, and it's, you know, by both management, community engagement, all this other collaboration. So how are you, and, and having these, just like Marissa said, having all these quarterly. Do you need something from us? Is it so for us to that we know what's going on? We had this goals. Give you very broad to give you move, you know, uh, room to be innovative and creative. And so it's great, because they're very general, it would be great to see how, how these goals are being executed at a quarterly basis. That's what I would like to see. More than fifteen, um, job description.
And then when you talk about goals, are you talking about our city council goals or, okay? Right, I, I think that's kind of the way that Scott mentioned that we're really focused on what the city council goals are, what's, and as Marissa mentioned, what's going well. What we, what, when, what do we need help with? What do you need assistance from myself or the staff or from the council? Um, what can the council do? Just having those check-ins about that, that, and those ones can be in executive session because we're talking about individual performance as well. When it's just doing a checkup of our individual performance on that. But our general conversations about goals and, we're, we're doing that in regular session anyways. We're, we're giving follow-up and feedback and that's where we have our department reports to give you every single month to keep you updated with how we're going forward with these things. But really the, if we did the, the quarterly, it'd be in the executive more just that. Leadership wise, um, performance wise. Let's have that conversation that is really focused on not the goals specifically. Like, like not planning how we're going to do goals differently, because we have to be careful and you keep that in open session because that's a city direction. It's not about the city goal or changing those, but how are we performing and accomplishing those goals? And there is a distinct difference in that.
That's, it's just like when, you know, somebody, you go into a job and you have like a work plan, right? And do you, are you achieving, this is kind of your work plan. How are you executing your work plan? That's how I think it should be, um, it should be kind of evaluate, evaluated by efficiency in order to execute these.
Right, so the, the suggestion would be, we're talking in these quarterly reviews, not so much about the fifteen minimum qualifications, but about these priorities that the council staff put together and, um, and about our performance side of it, not the actual goals themselves and changing or adjusting or putting.
No, not changing, no. It's like more how you're executing the goal that we.
Right.
I think it's a lot more than just those four goals though. My goal is, is he meeting with other governmental agencies too. That's our goal of his job description. So more in just, more than just.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the, the purpose of this is this evaluation becomes more goal, um, focused or, or project focused. And, um, the, uh, yeah, Lazenby article, it does say here that if you are going to have more of a, a goal focused, uh, review, that you do need to focus more on looking at the tactical steps for moving toward those higher goals. So I think what councillor Santiago is saying, and we just kind of went through a similar process at our organization, setting our, our goals, everyone's individual goals around project, projects that feed into the larger organizational KPIs, but we have dashboards, right? We do have project management tools and so we can always be looking at kind of where we're at in that process, working towards those goals and using that as a measurement of performance, both for the team as well as individuals. So I would agree, having a little bit more around the tactics of how we're working to achieve like the major milestones of certain projects. If those are the projects we're focusing on for that quarter or the goals that we choose to focus on for the quarter.
Right, and, and as the mayor, Joe, as you mentioned, if there was a main priority, we can talk about that. It's, hey, we really wanted a city manager is going to go and attend these other meetings. What are you doing to attend CET? What are you doing? You know, are we doing, or which organizations are you attending? But after I'm follow up with that once, if you follow with that other quarter, it's going to be almost the same unless we're trying to do something different. Because after I'm starting to attend all those meetings, just to check, are you still doing it? Or how, you know, what, where to go from there? I mean, so I, I do think there's some things that are momentary check-in, is there a priority? And maybe it could be an occasional follow-up, hey, how are those going? How are those meetings going? Have you been able to participate or whatever? Um, and those would be topics, and, and I think to go along with Tyler's mention, it is good to have what things should we be discussing? So it's not just a free for all of anything.
Do you leave the job description responsibilities alone? Because that's what we're expect, our expectations. But the review process is based on goals that we've set forth in a retreat. And how are you achieving those? What are you doing to work on those?
Right, and these job description things, if you want to follow up on those, I, I don't think that would be off, I think it'd be out of there in a review, if you wanted to follow up, hey, I just want to, I'm curious about this, haven't heard about it for a while. We really had to focus to make sure that there's these participation in these meetings.
I'm, I'm. You can speak to that. Sorry, I'm hearing, uh, two things here. So first, um, number five of the essential job function says attends all city council meeting, manages and coordinates projects to accomplish the goals and object, objectives of city council. But we do have the goals and objectives too, I think, um, some of the points that are being made here. But also you mentioned too, that you're, you're giving continuous updates on where we're at with the goals too. So, um, I, I feel like we're starting to get an example here of what it's going to feel like if we don't have defined. Of course, if we don't have a defined criteria here to evaluate. So I, I just, um, we do need to have, in my opinion, we do need to have an evaluation criteria that's very clear. Otherwise, I think it's going to become unfair and confusing to you. And, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Do you think about the city council relationships, leadership? I have not seen it referenced. So I'm just wondering if we take a look at your spreadsheet, compare this to the recommendation. Perhaps we capture all the core competencies and maybe that, that could be the sign for the criteria. It's kind of keeping in line, thank you, keeping in, keeping in line with the motto of keep, make it simple.
Yeah.
It would behoove us to consolidate the competencies, um, just so that way, otherwise it.
Yeah, no, I, I, um, so to that point, I think that again, I go back to the city manager's concern is what I felt was what you're relating to is we don't want to prescribe your way of doing things.
Right.
Everybody does things differently. You get to the end result, it can be just as good or even greater.
Right.
And I think when I look at the essential job. And I think when I look at the essential job functions, that it's very non-prescriptive. I think it gives you a lot of flexibility to do things the way that you want to do things, but also telling you what's important to us and what you're going to be evaluated on. So what I would, where I'm going with this is giving you the most flexibility to accomplish your essential job functions in the way that you want to do them.
So is your recommendation just taking these essential functions every quarter or just once a year and just basically having a discussion about them?
Yeah. I, I think, yes, but here's the other thing, is the problem I've always had in trying to do these evaluations, is there's so much that we can't observe because we're not here every day. What would be really helpful to me is if we simply heard from you about how you're accomplishing those things, so that we can see that when we go into this in the very start. And you might not be or have done all of these things and that's fine. Alls we need to know is the opportunity didn't present yet. But I think we need to hear, because we aren't here every day, we can't make those observations of you, that we need to hear from you how you're accomplishing those things. And I think that needs to be the foundation of how we go into each one of these reviews.
Yeah. And, and my recommendation would be just have a dialogue about it as opposed to a pre-written that takes me eight hours to put together for you. Because that can get, I actually talked to another city manager about his review and he does, they do something similar to the seven core competencies that I had in there. And when I asked, well, what would you do different? What, what's not helpful to you is like the fact that I've spent two days putting my pre, my self-evaluation in there, it takes me forever, such a waste of company time when I could have these conversations really quick. But the problem was, is they also do their eval, you know, they do their written evaluation, so everything, a bunch of written stuff compared to if, he's like, if, what I was telling, well, this is what we're looking at or I'm recommending, he said, that would be so nice. Like, just to come in, let's have a discussion as opposed to making it super complicated.
What I'm saying is tell us the things that we don't know.
Right.
The things that we're not seeing every day. That's, that's really all that we need to, we just can't possibly know all the great things that you're doing.
My question then is, these to me are very similar, they're just different. Like, this is maybe a little more specific, that one is very general, but, so like, if we pick one, are you saying like, if we go with these core competencies, we're going to get together every quarter and just talk about these? I mean, do, do we pick a few? Do you tell us how you're doing community public relations where you think we want to hear? I mean, what is, how do you present this?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? So I think it's really us relying on seventeen. Us observing in the moment. So when we're here in the meeting, we're observing what Ben is providing to us and what he's sharing with us, how he's conducting the meeting. How we're able to get a glimpse into his leadership style is when his staff comes and presents and shares out information. Or when we go to county events or city events, what are different types of events outside of these walls, where some or all of us may attend, we're observing how Ben and/or staff is showing up in those moments. So it's, I, I view this as it's our responsibility to make these notations as well, to go along in this process, as well as for Ben to share with us his perspective. And the goal is hopefully those perspectives align. And then in that process, it's, when we're in those moments, wants immediate feedback, positive or negative. And when we experience or observe something, we're giving that feedback to them in the moment. So I really see this more as like, it's a two-way street. So he'll give us his perspective, we're making notes, like, in terms of like, if we say these are the competencies, then all of us can take our actions and be accountable for having that conversation on a quarterly basis.
Right. And I would, I would say, to your point, there are some things you may not know. So on those areas, you could just ask, tell me how you're doing this so we can at least have an idea. I don't know if it's really a way to rate or anything, it's just more of feedback for you guys, so you understand how I'm doing it. But you can see the outcomes as you, as Marissa mentioned. And, and kudos to this council, you guys are very, you're very active council, which is great. I see you at a lot of these events, whether it's the Legal Organ Cities, the City County Dinner, we're going to, a lot of different things. I've been able to work with each of you. And, and that's one thing, you are a council as a whole, so maybe you individually don't have or haven't noticed all those, but when you come in to these discussions, you'll be surprised at how many, you're like, oh, well, I did. See, and I saw that a lot in my last council where they're like, well, I don't know how you did that in the other, well, I was there at that meeting, he was, he did this and we saw that, oh, cool, thanks. Like, there's, there's a lot as the, as the group, that you guys all see different things. Because I do, you, you do individually have strengths or things that you're focused on that you come to different events. And as a whole, you, you're able to get most of this taken care of pretty well with your own observations, but maybe there are things you just haven't seen. So that discussion helps.
Out of time, and we did have a potential executive session or discussion later. Do we feel that we need to table that? Do you feel anything, are we ready? Do you want to try the first six months in, in, in a session is go through these core competencies? Or we want to try to maybe have in our next meeting, a, a discussion?
I would feel comfortable, if the council comfortable for this one, like say the six-month, you guys have mentioned, well, we want to make sure we have what we have. So having those conversations around this, this core, this is basic fifteen that Tyler had, it makes sense, I get that. We should have those conversations, we can have that discussion very well. And then we could work, if we want to change something for the quarterly or annual, we can still have another meeting to discuss those. Or, or not, it, it's, it's up to the council.
I, whether it be categories or competencies, I, I really like that. The only thing I do suggest to add in number eight, strategic planning, it's more like how you set long-term vision and how you, again, how do you execute it? How do you get there? So that's why I'm adding. Wait, did I miss it?
Good.
Leadership.
It aids in establishing long-range goals. Something about our council goals, you could put in strategic plan versus goal.
Number two in our leadership has utilize a strategic forward-thinking approach.
Okay. All right. Maybe you could add in strategic, I mean, just the planning part of it, because I know that you are and you're very innovative and just, and the way of thinking, so.
Right. I guess the question would be for this one, are we just going off the job description, those fifteen, just to discuss those? Or would we go off the seven? I think that the seven that I put on, they were more for the forward, like how we're going to do as a regular thing. Sounded like the council's desire was, or that some of the council wanted to just at least hit these main ones as our first six-month starter.
I'm fine with these.
So...
For six months?
I, I sent my draft concept to the mayor just to get his feedback. And that's why it hasn't went out to everybody, because I didn't know if it's like, nope, we're not doing that, or it's terrible idea, or what. I just wanted to get at least one other person's opinion on that before. So I'm, I, I mean, I, whatever the group consensus is here, I, I'm fine with, I think we, I think there's good ideas here, no matter what. I'm just trying to streamline, avoid confusion and make sure that you have a clear goalpost that's not moving.
Let, let's just start with the seven core competencies. Get all that unveiled, we've got the, we've got the detail enough there to go into depth and...
I would, I would like to, I saw the floor. I would like to send this out and get feedback from everybody before we move to that. However, that said, because there is a financial component to this, are we, can we at least get an agreement on, or consensus that, when, if there is a pay component to this, are we retroing it to a certain backdate? Because I, I mean, if I was in Ben's position, that's what I'd be thinking about right now.
So I read through the contract, I didn't see, I missed it. I didn't see the, that said at six months, the compensation component to it. So was that in the contract and I just flat-out missed it? Or?
I don't think it's spelled out in the contract directly, but there was discussion about the fact that we're doing salary studies and that a lot is going to have to change and that was including my position as well. I have gone through for that, for the purpose of this, of grabbing similar sites, type cities as part of that. The recommendation that Scott has really ties in that a lot easier, so it's not, so once again, if I'm doing this or not, you know, how do you really judge what that looks like? It's really a whole conversation that we see all the time in my whole year that we're talking about, how am I performing? I'm either performing or I'm not. And his recommendation is just to have that wage scale with, yeah, just, so at, in the year, you get that five percent step. Now, I'm already typically manager towards the top of that anyway, so what it would look like going forward, other than that last step that I still need to get, would be just salary studies. We come back and say, what is the market paying for this? And do that every two to three years, saying, has it changed a whole lot or are we still competitive? And then once a year, we can also discuss about benefits as well.
That's a separate discussion, the conversation.
Right.
And, and, yeah, we can look at retroing it. I think if we're taking the delay past six months, I think to look at, since we're at seven o'clock, we do have a, a spot later in there where we do have open session. We can discuss it more then if we feel necessary. Can skip the executive session and just do open session and if, if we think we're ready, if we need to go to the exec session, we can. Getting a late start. Okay. So work session is adjourned.